Okay, thank you, Austin. Call help please. Austin, can you see her?
Present.
All. And here's.
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Stroller?
Thrum?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you all for being here. We barely have a quorum here. Five, this is so unusual for us. Usually we have eight, or at least seven. Okay, the first item is the approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 24th, 2017, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion or amendments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. All right, public comments, that would be for anyone who is not on the agenda that would like to come to the podium, give your name, address, ward, and you are allotted five minutes. All right. Meeting along the business and discussion items. Carol McCullough, we're gonna defer her to later in the meeting, provided she can come. So we are gonna start with Crystal, Crystal Leece.
Hi.
Hi.
We live up kinda by the Legion, on 18th Street, but it's not that through 18th, it goes to 18th Calhoun, and it's kind of a curve right there. There's a pole there that has 18th and Calhoun signed, right in somebody's yard. And we have what used to be a very retired area, but is now a family-oriented area. We have the Joneses on the corner, and then a new family with Griffys, and then our family. And there's a lot of little kids that are playing on that street. Where that, Calhoun and 18th join, it's very blind. And when we have people that come around off of Calhoun onto 18th, they're in the middle of that road. We've had our kids riding up and down the street, which they do, you know, there's no sidewalks, and they've almost been hit. We need to put a sign or something, some, something to acknowledge that this is no longer just older people, there is a lot of little kids in that area.
Do we do that, Austin?
I don't think-
Do we have signs like that?
I don't think we, have we, I don't think we've done that-
Have we ever done that?
Or bought one?
Children at play? I mean, I've seen the-
Similar signs like that around.
I've seen the plastic ones that people put out, but do we, as a city-
There's some up by Dargit's Park, in that area, and maybe over by Lyons, I'm not positive about that, but-
Okay, may I address this?
Yes.
Those are in the park areas. We've got a lot of neighborhoods that have got a lot of children at play. And I think that we're setting a precedence if we put a sign there, I think if the neighbors wanna put a sign there, because it's not a sign that, that, that we can give tickets for if people ignore it, it just says "Children at Play." I think if they wanna buy their sign and they wanna put it out there, I don't think it, it takes away from anything, it does draw attention to the fact there's children at play, but I don't think that that's, that it's a reason like putting it around Dargit's Park, or Lyons Park, or Crosswalks.
I think she's, she's concerned because of the curb, right?
It's a blind area.
So we could put a slow curb sign.
I, I think this would be another one of those items that might be good to take to the Police and Fire Committee and do some research, talk to the chief and see what kind of precedents and enforcement and things-
I was directed here.
No, no, I understand, no, you, this is the right, you're doing it right. Oh, really? Chief said to come here. Well, okay, at any rate-
So it needs to go to the committee.
I think as a council, I think the committee should, should look at it and see where other places we have them, and see what kind of precedent we'd be setting, come back with a proposal for the council to debate.
I think that's a good idea.
And not only that, I mean, we do have the Legion ballpark right there, and so the kids do ride-
Do a lot of people cut through there?
They do. The little kids will ride their bikes through there, you know, and that, that's my concern, it's just that it is blind.
Sure.
You know, by the time they're up on our kids, it is gonna be too late one time.
There are a lot of people that use the 8th Road now, that it wasn't, it wasn't used before to direct people to the trail, we never signed-
You mean 8th Street?
8th Street. Thank you, 8th Street, thank you. And I think that if any, any place needs something that says, you know, watch for pedestrians or watch for children, because women with baby strollers use that, and people are used to racing up through there, and it, it should, it, we, if we're gonna put a sign anywhere, if we put a sign there, I think we should also put signs up and down 8th Road to Jayhawk.
I'll put that also on our list of things to look at.
8th Street?
Yes.
8th Street, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks for pointing that out.
Yes, thank you.
We wouldn't know that otherwise, so-
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go and have Charlie speak real quick, 'cause I don't think this will take too long, will it, Charlie?
Charles Weigert with the Pony Express Museum. Fact that the, each year, the Pony Express re-riders reenact the carrying of the mail from St. Joe to Sacramento, or vice versa. This year, it's coming to town June the 6th, sometime around 8:10 in the morning. And the Pony Express Museum would like to request the alley between the Pony Barn and the drugstore closed, half of that alley, so that the post office still uses the post office end of the alley. We would also like to request eight to 10 picnic tables from the city, while we can serve a fundraiser chuck wagon breakfast that morning, from about 7 till 10 a.m.
Do we have that many picnic tables? Mobile picnic tables?
We do.
Well, you call them mobile, they're real heavy.
Yeah.
If you haven't, if you've lifted one, they're not very mobile. They're designed to be extremely heavy.
We have that many.
Yeah, we have that many.
And where's the rider gonna come?
They will generally come down Broadway, uh, well, uh, yeah, I think they'll come into town on Broadway through, from Keystone. I'm not real sure, I'm not a re-rider. As Chairman of the Pony Express Board, we'd like to do something to advertise and talk about the Pony Express.
Okay, well, I, 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 I just wanna make sure that if we need to put anything else out where the riders coming, usually they come through, and it's like in the morning.
Up and down the alley.
Yeah. But this time, if there's something else we need to barricade off, let us know where the rider's coming.
I don't think that, that will be a concern, vehicle traffic, to stop vehicle traffic in the alley, and would, there'll be enough people there, I think, that 8th Street, although I'm not asking that we close 8th Street, but maybe a barricade set down there to indicate that-
To slow down?
Yeah.
Okay.
There're generally people milling around when the transaction occurs anyway, so-
What if, sorry, um, you say you're not asking to block it off, but what if some of the, like, the spaces, you know, out a little bit away would be blocked off, would that give more room for people to mill around and not spill out into the street?
The parking spaces along there?
Yeah.
Yes.
That'd be enough?
Yeah, that might be sufficient, is actually if we could say, can we block the parking spaces off along the east side of 8th Street, by the Pony Barn drugstore area there?
The drugstore probably wants to keep a couple of those spaces out, because that's where their 15-minute or less parking is.
But the ones-
But the ones behind their parking, they're probably okay.
Yeah, the ones where the black posts are-
We'll have to ask them if they're okay, but I'm sure they'll say that, that area's okay. So, is there a motion?
I'm in hopes that it's a community affair, and there'll be other activities going on, just because it's a good time in the morning, and we'll have, it's a fundraiser chuck wagon breakfast.
Well, I'm excited. Yes, Vicky?
Has somebody talked to the post office?
Yes, I did.
And they said, "No problem, okay." So did they put restrictions?
Leave their end of the alley open.
They're doing it.
They're okay.
Thank you. And are you okay using city staff with us to do this?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the use of picnic tables and barricades for the Pony Express ride-
June the 6th.
The June the 6th, for the fundraiser.
As well as-
Pony Barn.
Closing down half the alley?
And along with closing down the half of the alley between the Pony Express Barn and, um-
Pony, Post Office.
8th Street.
Post Office, thank you.
Sixty noon.
That they're in the half end.
Sixty noon.
Okay, sixty noon, all right. Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh, all right, Charlie?
Thanks, thanks.
Looking forward to it. Hope you, hope it's a beautiful day for a chuck wagon breakfast. All right, Carol, you're up. We're glad you made it.
I did. Puppies, that's not puppies.
Why do you think puppies?
Bubs, bubs are puppies. She just looked a puppy kinda gal. Puppies? Don't you love them?
All right, thank you.
I'm new for my file.
Here.
Hope your sister is proud. Say a prayer.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. I think most of you know me, but I'm Carol McCullough with Brice and Novelli, and I provided your 2016 annual audit this year. Um, we were looking forward to this with the new city administrator, and some changes in personnel, and it went very well, it just went real well. Um, you've done a nice job of being able to transition between your staff and that's, that's nice. Um, we can start with the blue book, nothing drastic, nothing changing much. Um, page two, of course, is the, down in the third or fourth paragraph or so, unmodified opinion, we did give you an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, on your financial statements based upon the statutory basis financial statements. Always a good thing to, to get. Um, some of the notes that I kind of made was on page four and five, I looked at your beginning cash and your ending cash, and made a note that, um, your ending was more than your beginning, which is always a good thing, about $181,000. Um, I did notice individually on some of the, some of the funds, that general fund has decreased about 40, bond and interest decreased about 110, capital improvements decreased about 75, water increased about 100 and, or 250,000, and sewage decreased about, sewage replacements decreased about 170,000. Um, I noticed also in the funds, just, just looking straight at expenses versus revenues, um, that your general fund, bond and interest, um, special purpose, except for the employee benefits, sales tax, swimming pool, sales tax, and municipal reserve, and the business funds, except for water revenue and the water utility reserve, all needed, all had more expenses coming out of them than receipts, and I'm sure you're all aware of that, just something to kind of watch in the future, you know, when those funds start to utilize more than what they're bringing in, then you end up ticking out what is carryover cash. Um, not a whole lot to report in that. Um, I'm gonna say, do you, if you have any questions, I, I hope we got it out early enough that everybody got an opportunity to review it before we're bringing it in in final form. Um, anybody have any questions about it?
I haven't seen this till tonight, did anybody see it? Yeah, I don't think the council saw it till tonight.
Okay, well, I did ask, when I sent it out in March, that you guys would read, would get it.
Yeah, we need to make sure that happens. The draft, so that when we, when she comes, we've already reviewed it, I think that's important.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. I dropped that, that's-
That's all right, I just, in the, in the future, make sure we see it first. Is there anything else you wanna point out to us?
No, I think all the financials, all the notes, notes that we do to the financial statements, beginning on page, um, seven through where the financial statements, the statements at the back of the start, um, through page 17 are, um, pretty much the same, no changes, no additional disclosures required to make. Um, you know, I have really began to make sure that you guys really look at this pages 17 and 18, those are the, the notes to the financial statements for your debt materials and your debt schedules, those are just really great tools to look for planning, and I think that, uh, they're just a good thing to, to have an idea of what your future debt payments are gonna look like, and making sure that, that you have those. The only other comment I'll, I'll make is, I've had several city managers and, um, several administrators that were doing other audits on, and I'm sure you guys are aware of this, of how the state is looking at these, at the sales tax money, and how it could affect you guys in the future, and you guys really heavily rely on that sales tax money for capital improvements and other improvements, that, you know, there's a potential there that they may try to grab some of it.
You mean for an administrative fee, for giving it back to us, or what are you referring to?
Taking a portion of it, I mean, dropping the portion that you're getting, you know.
Well, aren't they taking 6.2 now?
Yeah, but, but they're talking about taking another portion to help fund the, the losses in the state.
I didn't know that was under discussion.
Looking at ways that they could potentially take it in, and I'm cautioning everybody, take a look at it, you know, 'cause it's a great revenue producer for you guys, and you don't, you know, whatever portion they take, you know, a percentage, if they decide to take another percent of it, it just kinda leaves you guys either forced to raise it again, or forced to find another funding source.
The state of Kansas taking 6.2 is high compared to other states.
Sure, it is.
As it is.
But look at their deficits.
I know.
As they get, as they get crunched, you'll, you'll either get it from them, you know, there'll either be rate hikes in taxes to the people from the state, or they'll find another funding source, maybe from the counties and the cities, and go with it, so, I'm just, I'm just always cautious, particularly if you rely on that money for a lot of your stuff. Um, and you're not the only ones, a lot of people do. As far as the communication letter, um, we found no significant audit findings in the, in the three-page stapled one, and we found no significant audit findings, we have made a couple of comments, again, um, and I want to make sure when we get to the second one that I talk about it a little bit. The preparation of the financial statements, the normal disclosure that we made, since you don't have a CPA on staff, and Debbie does a really good job of sending me that K-MAG, so I get a real good feeling that she understands, you know, what is required, but because you don't have a CPA looking over your notes, and I'm quote assisting, um, I have to write the note to, to indicate further standards, at least notify, I'm not making it a significant deficiency or a material weakness, but I do, do make note in this communication letter to let you know. Um, and then we give a few suggestions as to how you can attempt to remedy some of that by getting obviously more, um, support from different agencies to help you to understand it, but I don't feel that you guys don't understand your statements at all, it's not in the statement area, it's usually more in the disclosure area, knowing what you have to disclose, and how it has to be written, and then knowing if we've written it, if it's right, that we've covered it, so, I, I just talked about it. On the second note, I want to make sure, I had a long conversation with Janice, she called me about it, um, on the Marysville Library. I, you know, I wanna make sure that everyone understands that the errors that we found on their stuff was not material, it didn't have a whole lot of bearing on their financial statements, they, they, they were wrong in the sense that they had them in the wrong, um, fund, they have three funds at the library, and they were reporting them wrong in the three funds, they had cash, I think their capital improvement, it was like $4,800 was off for capital improvement and general fund, because they had not posted, um, a payment that they had made, and not had, and not taken it out of the correct account. In total, their whole errors, I think amounted to like $500 at the most, you know, that we had to fix. And I wanna make sure everyone understands that they are not grossly inept, they're not, you know, there's not a huge issue. The reason we bring it up again, and, and it was still the same type of things that we had last year, was that, um, they might not know they have an error, because she has an internal set of books that she uses to report to her board, and she really understands those, she does not understand QuickBooks nearly as well, but we don't audit her QuickBooks, or her internal set, we audit QuickBooks, and that's the one we have to find that's right. And so, we talked about controls that she could put in place to improve, because they're a small organization, and because they all participate in the whole operation, or she participates in the whole operation on an annual basis of every business part of their organization. In other words, she is involved with purchasing, she's involved with the approval of purchasing, she's involved with okaying the, the general ledger, um, posting, she's involved with the deposits, she takes money, because she's involved in every facet of that, you really need to work to incorporate independence, you know, making sure that you're independent and that you're compatible with the segregation of duties. So one of the things that we have talked, that we talked about was making sure that, um, maybe someone outside of herself is approving or getting the bank statements and doing an independent bank rec. While she does not do the bank rec, the accounting firm does not make any journal entries unless it's at her behest, and so, she's technically really involved in the, you know, in that process, and we would like to see maybe twice a year, you know, it'd have to be any more than that, that perhaps a bank statement would go directly to the treasurer of the board, and she would do the, she would do it, and then she'd sign off on it, and, you know, they could still both do it, but-
Who's your treasurer of your board, Janice?
We are the treasurer of the board last month, and we have directions.
Okay. Um, I know you were concerned about segregation of duties with the municipal court last year, and we, we had asked Kenny Kekever, the city treasurer, to do some bank reconciliations, do you want Kenny to do?
That's up to you guys, I, you know, that's however you guys wanna do it. We would just like to see, you know, just a couple of times-
One other person look over?
Yeah. And, and, and the key to that is making sure that the bank statement goes, to, to, to not compromise the, the process, that the bank statement goes directly to whomever's gonna do it independent.
Who do you think she gets with?
City treasurer.
Would you recommend Kenny looking over there?
He can, but-
Are waiting to see who she gets as treasurer.
Waiting to see who she gets as treasurer would probably be the first step.
And-
You, you are gonna continue to do the bank reconciliations, though, on a monthly basis, you do them now, Janice?
I cannot do reconciliations, I take them to our accountant, to the accountant for the reconciliations.
Here, come up so-
Yeah.
Sorry. Janice?
Who's their accountant? She doesn't do them, but she gets the bank statement, and she takes the bank statement.
She gets the bank.
And it's that process.
So, Mason's does the reconciliation?
Correct, and then I present them to the board treasurer, and they inspect them, and then they initial them.
So could we just have the bank statements go directly to Mason's?
That's what I was going to do, and then Carol gave me the idea that twice a year, at least twice a year, I have one sent directly to the board treasurer, and they do an independent reconciliation.
So they're gonna go to the accounting firm now, and the, the double check will be the treasurer?
Correct.
Okay, is that all right with you?
That's, that works. I don't want it to get cumbersome.
How do you get it so that they send just two statements out of the year?
Well, I have to have that, I was gonna talk to the bank, I mean, Carol says that, that other boards work that out, so, I was gonna-
Change the mailing address on certain months, I mean, I don't know how that works, but-
Yeah.
If other people do it, it's doable.
Just twice a year.
Oh, they just send a second statement?
Mason's will still get it, but that's how-
The treasurer will get it?
That's how they used to do it when you just had, or if they were quarterly, but I did ours monthly, and I started doing it more monthly, and they would do it, and then the previous treasurer wasn't there, now both Kenny and I did it monthly, but at that time, he did it quarterly, and I got it monthly.
Okay, so it sounds like you got it figured out.
Yeah, I think it works, but I, I wanna make sure that we understand that there was no gross, you know, stuff going on here that was wrong, and, and I think just getting an understanding of QuickBooks will be very helpful, and, and then reconciling her system to the QuickBooks to see that-
I, I'm sure you can do that, Janice.
Well, and it's, it's not so much QuickBooks as it is the, um, accounting terms, and, and things like that.
She has brought me into reality, that some people don't understand when I say, what I say, I love her for that, 'cause she just, she, she takes me back a step to make sure that I get that.
Well, I know she's researched Kansas statute, so I think she can understand accounting terms, so, I think we can make that work, Janice.
I think, I think you can too, so, I just kinda wanted to, to make sure that reading this, that you didn't take it to another level, you know, and question it, so-
Thanks, Janice.
You're welcome. I think it will be real helpful if, if she gets more of an understanding of her, of the QuickBooks, and understands how it flows and how it goes in. And then the last thing, which I have not written up, but I, you know, I think I've talked about this previously, and I, and I know staff's like, "Oh, shut up, Carol, I don't wanna hear this."
You know what she's gonna say? Okay, what is it?
I look at your processes, and I say, "There's some duplication of effort."
Oh, I remember talking about-
Particularly in payroll. And I think it's because, and I, and who, who can say, they can be wrong, is that you have the process down, and you know if something's out of whack, but on the other side, you don't utilize the-
The system.
The system enough, and when you're dealing with journal entries being, going into that system, you always have an opportunity for error, it just happens. And we had several, you know, several payroll errors, very small, and, you know, once we looked at them, we knew that they were errors, and they got fixed, or, you know, the change in the staff might have created, but, but I'm always encouraging that you look at the payroll modules that you have available, and see if there's something that could help you get it all incorporated. I can't believe I'm saying that, someone who won't even do banking online, I won't do it because I'm afraid they'll mess up, and it'll take me forever to find it, you know, and I get it, that sometimes it's easier, but sometimes, you know, if, if it works, it's pretty slick, go straight into it, and, and if you understand what is getting posted, and that's the key, is understanding how things are being posted, and, and, and I think that is a learning process that's great. So you can find out if, if you're not getting somebody set up right, or whatever, in the system, I think it can help you to find that, and then you can, they, they obviously, I'm guessing, would have reports that would say, "This is an outlier, it's an exception," you probably need to look at it, if it's a, you know, if it's coming out kinda strange, and probably need to take a second look to see if something's set up, but I'm always encouraging to, to look at the resources, it may help you in the future.
Did you get happy with the municipal court then? That's what you brought up last year.
Um, yeah, it was, it was much better.
Okay.
I, I did request from Ken several times, um, to see his reconciliation between those court reports and between that bank rec, I didn't ever get them. I did ask for it several times. I, um, I ended up taking it to a spreadsheet, and in and out, took all the bank statements and scheduled them, to make sure that I could get to it within a reasonable amount.
You mean the statements we get in our packets, that shows up money in by, by day? Is that what she's talking about?
Well, I, I, it becomes a situation of, and not so much probably in the middle of the year, it only probably is an issue at the end of the year, where a check will get dated January 1, but it was really for December 31st, you're not on an accrual basis, you're on a cash basis. That check does not get listed as an outstanding check. It should be, it's an outstanding check in, in my mind, even though it's- the year, it only probably is an issue at the end of the year where a check will get dated January 1, but it was really for December 31st. You're not on an accrual basis, you're on a cash basis. That check does not get listed as an outstanding check. It should be. It's an outstanding check in, in my mind, even though it's, you know, it's dated January, I get it, it's for December services, but it's outstanding. And it needs to be on an outstanding checklist and I, you know, I should be able to see it on an outstanding checklist that has included the bank. I think it's a timing issue. It's really a timing issue when they can get things paid. But I'm, you know, I'm taking it at his word that he is reconciling between. I mean, there are things that court does not report from what I can understand, and I think it was the offages that I was seeing on their reports for like a $5 letter, a second, a second letter that they have to send. I, I don't believe that goes through the reporting system, it's outside of it, certain letters are. And so, I had to account for those kind of separately to make sure that I was getting to the same numbers, you know, getting it. We're just a couple of things that don't get reported as deposits in the report, but are deposited in the bank.
Will we bill them for that $5 for the second letter? I think so.
There's some second letters. There's a couple of letters that, that I think they do outside of that court system that doesn't go through the court system's records. And so, it would just be something I would, again, because that one is an area where we got one person doing it all, that it really does need an outside independent person revealing some of it, just to make sure that, that you agree with it, everybody agrees with it. But other than that, it was fine. And, and we worked through it and got it to work, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Carol?
Thank you for coming up.
Okay. If, if we have any questions, we can always email you. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right. I have, I email.
We will email you. Is it listed on here?
Uh, I don't know that we put it on here. Let her have it on our letter. I don't know. I can send it if you want me to send it to you or Debbie. I haven't.
Okay. So, if we have any questions, we'll get the email from Debbie and send it directly to you.
That would be great.
Isn't this in the blue stripe here? Isn't this the email?
This is recent valley. And all you do is switch, that, well, the WWW is our, is our webpage. Um, I'm looking down here now. All we have down here is our phone number. Tended to stay away from putting, because our letter goes out to so many people, we don't want spam. A lot of spam in our emails, so we have tended to not, to not do. But what it really is, is it's just the carolm@recentvalley.com. Real simple.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. What's our business and discussion items? The next item is a considered agenda?
Move to approve considered agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five oh. The next item is the appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriation ordinance 3650, the amount of $316,997.60.
Second.
Any discussion there?
Discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to ask Austin on the first entry, page number 16, AT&amp;T. Austin, I understand that AT&amp;T is going to have a rate hike soon. It seemed to me just in our recent past that we have discussed doing something about that. I know you were going to research it. So, is something going to happen there with our phone bill as this month? It's $1,254.64 for telephone service.
I've started the process with, with Blue Valley to switch our phone service and the, we will get an up-to-date phone service rather than this old, I forget what they call it, but the, the service that we have now. We will save about $200 to $300 a month going with Blue Valley and upgrading our phone, getting brand-new phones and, and service.
This is AT&amp;T for City Hall?
That's AT&amp;T.
Citywide.
Citywide?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good savings. Okay. Then the next item is the BMW Electric. I have no, I have no problem with the repair bill. My question is, it says repair a frozen water pipe at the pool. We haven't had weather cold enough to freeze lines, so I'm wondering if, if this was an error on building that we ended up with pipes that are exposed to 32, we didn't get permit 230.
This was a pipe in the ceiling of the pool, the pool house. And it got cold enough to, to freeze it and crack it, so it, it, it broke the, it broke the pipe, so that needed to be fixed. So, basically what the solution is going forward is we're going to clear out the lines before we close on the pool.
Okay. Did we have to go in and insulate there?
No. We're not, we're not going to insulate there. I mean, we, we might put future insulation in there, but to guarantee that we won't crack any more pipes, we're just going to clear, clear out all the water before, before the winter comes.
Blow it out with the air compressor.
Yes. So, that, that way we don't have to worry about that much in the winter.
Okay, thank you. Then my next one was Larson Construction, $3,737.50 for an evacuator and crew for a forced main break on 3317. Obviously, we got that fixed. What was entailed in that? And is that line getting so old that we can anticipate future breaks or are we going to redo that more? What's the solution?
That break was really, the gasket came out on a joint. So, the, um, the, the pipe kind of shifted a little bit, but the, the force of that sewage forced the pu, uh, the, the gasket out right there. Yes, the pipe is getting old, but it's, it's not so old that we have to go fully and replace it. There are some issues with the, um, the air release valves that we're going to address.
Air release? I'm sorry, what is that?
Basically, we have five air release valves along the force, the 14-inch force main and.
Under the bridge?
The whole thing.
The whole thing. So, the, the.
What's their function?
They release the air that's built up in there. Otherwise, if you just leave it there.
Oh, sure.
The pressure builds up.
Sure.
And then cracks pipes like we just fixed this last week.
Okay.
So, we're, we have to replace at least three of them because they got so corroded. We're getting some designs on some air leaf valves. And then, in addition to that, we're going to put a, uh, manhole lid on top of these. Instead of just a solid manhole lid, we're going to do the ones with.
Air vents.
Air vents in them. That way, the sewer gas won't corrode.
Methane.
Yeah. They won't corrode what's in there.
How many times has that?
We won't know until they're designed. It's going to, it's basically, we're going to use, the valve itself is fine, it's everything below it, the connecting pieces, the, the saddle that was put on there that are breaking down. So, that connection, it'd be, we're thinking, taking a section out, putting a T in there and bringing it up and just using different materials. That way, it doesn't corrode as, as much.
So, are there some joints we have to dig up? Are we going to do some preventative maintenance or?
I mean, it's, uh, these are basically manhole. If you go out, uh, that frontage road.
There's one right.
West River Road?
No. Right there by.
On Ferry Park, right?
No. Just right, right down by, just block east or west of CJ's, there's one.
Yeah, there's one over here.
It's a concrete deal about three foot around, Vicki, it sits right there on the corner.
It's a big, it's a big concrete thing with a man, a manhole lid on top of it.
Look at that.
And they, you, if you look down there, they go a little ways down. And we'll replace those. That way, we won't have some of these buildups that we've been having.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Then on page 18, varsity scoreboards, $13,752.18 for a scoreboard at Feld Field. This one here says it's going to be reimbursed by donations. Can you tell me something about that?
They, I forget which organization is doing this, but they've gathered enough money to cover the cost of the scoreboard itself. So, that, they, they utilize the city to get a tax-free advantage.
Okay.
And a government discount. So, that, that made it, those donations go a little bit further. Now, they're going to have to cover the portion of the insulation where they need the beams and the powder coating and for the beams and stuff like that.
They're giving the city?
Not, not the city. They, the donate, the organization that brought these people together to donate. But so far, 100% not city money.
So, the $13,752.18, which is a whole lot of money, we're paying that so that they could get the discounts, but ultimately donors, I sure would like to know the name of the donors and be able to thank them and say.
I'm sure a list will come out eventually, but it's, it's really great to see people come together and get.
That's significant. Thank you, donors. Okay, this, this last item I'll, I'll discuss. Okay, that's.
Anyone else have any questions about appropriations ordinance? Okay, roll call.
B Singer?
Yes.
EKIS?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Yes.
It's 5-0.
Thank you very much. All right. Austin, you're up.
Todd, we got three minutes.
What time?
Nothing. Joke we, me and Todd had before.
What time we were going to talk to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want us to slow down?
No, 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 no. Okay. All right. All the items on, or, two of the items on my report are from previous requests. The first one is 20th Street replacement. Council asked me to get bids, first from Lotman Construction and then I was later requested that AHRS be included in that. And they were happy enough to give bids. Just, and really, if you want to use this as an informational piece, because we did have, discuss just moving this back to next year. But the 20th Street replacement, we scaled it back to just north of one of the entries to the parking lot. So, this is what the revised bids are.
And through the intersection though, right?
Yeah, through the intersection, yeah. To fix everything in the intersection from North Street to just north of the.
When you gave us those numbers, when you said we have, we did it in-house, what was your estimate? I can't remember.
It was, uh.
But it was for the larger project.
It was for the bigger project. I did not redo the project numbers.
Well, you guys, how high a priority is this for you guys? You want to go ahead and do it? You don't want to do it?
No.
No? It's not a priority?
I think our balances are low enough, we could probably hold off on it. I mean, I think we should keep this in mind and revisit it next year, maybe take a look.
Next year, next year though, we have all those expenses for the, the 1.6 million if it comes through.
Yeah.
So, you want to wait and see what the sales tax does for a couple of months?
If you, if you leave, if you leave this, if you leave the sales tax money there, it's, it should be there next year, yes. Minor increase from just inflation for a year, but if you leave it there, we should, we should have it there next year.
Did they say how long this is good?
It's usually like 30 days. But you can.
Well, they're doing a lot of work here in town, so that's probably why they gave us a good price.
Yeah.
Lotman's is good for 10 days.
Yeah. There's a lot of difference between these bids, but when we're ready to talk about this, I want to talk about all the exclusions. I talked a little bit to Austin and he was explaining it to me and I, I'm just, I'm concerned about all the exclusions, the things they won't do. If they have to be done, somebody else has to do them.
And a lot of this was negotiated, or I told him, I asked Gary what needed to be done or what we were thinking about doing, because we could provide rock, that's easy enough. That cuts the cost of, let's say, Lotman pulling in from Nebraska with his rock. We'll have the rock here.
Well, the rock excavation, item number three on page 21, that's an exclusion. That indicates to me digging it out, not bringing some in to fill out, but if they're digging it out, they're not going to do that.
Well, you didn't find rock there.
There is no, yeah, there's no rock in there, it's just.
So, why they put it in as, as an exclusion?
Because they don't.
If they found something.
Do you remember a project up at the Lotman?
Yeah, that was like, just in case.
Yeah.
But AHRS, how long are they going to be in town for St. Greg's?
That's going to take a little bit.
Through the year end?
Yeah. But takes the winter.
Yeah. I think we should revisit this though in a couple of months.
I think so too.
And if, if our sales tax remains strong, I think maybe we should do it while AHRS is here, because otherwise, we're going to have a mobilization cost. So, you want to bring this back to us in a couple of months?
I would caution not, because this bid, like I said, they, unless they agree that this bid stays the same, I mean, that's.
It's useless?
Yeah.
Before we get, we're just saying, we're going to revisit this, does the quote change?
And I can, I can.
I think the key thing is that since they're in town, we should realize that they'll give us something like this.
Right.
Okay. So, you'll bring it back to us?
Bringing back it, bringing it back to you.
Couple of months?
Couple of months.
Maybe after Clinkston. When's Clink going to happen?
Oh, that should be, they are pushing it, but they're, they're pushing it.
Are they getting this month?
They are trying to get it, bid as fast as possible. I've been checking back with them on when that's going to be. It should, once they have the plans done and everything and KDOT reapproves it, because there were some minor changes on the last one, it should be, they go, we're ready to go out to bid. And then, uh, a month from then, it should be ready to go.
All right.
All right. Um, the next one is another request. You wanted to see how much Keystone Road from 11th Road to 11th Terrace was going to be and asked the Tony estimated, estimate it. And he estimated $701,994 just for the construction costs and then a $56,159 for engineering and materials testing. Kind of on par of what we were, what we were saying.
We were looking at 1.5 for both of them.
All together, yep.
So, did you, did you find out if it's a dedicated road?
No, no, I didn't.
That was my question to you.
Last night, yeah.
I, I got busy. Vicki was taking up a lot of my time.
Okay.
I did take up a lot of my time.
She was reviewing those appropriations ordinances.
Well, it keeps me from taking up a lot of time here tonight, because he answered a lot of my questions today that concerns that I have.
Well, that's your job, you're supposed to look into it.
You'll find that out for the next.
Yes, we will find that out.
So, um, so we can see how to proceed with that. Okay.
And then, the final one is financials. And basically, of note is our expenditures for the general fund were a little bit lower than previous, or not a little bit, quite a bit lower than previous years. And that's because we didn't get the insurance paid. Normally, as we do in April, it's going to hit in May. But with that, we've, which is, to the general fund is about $50,000 this year. And, uh, but also with that is the refund that insurance usually gives us on a yearly basis. We have not credited that to any of the money for revenue.
Yeah, so we got 20, almost $20,000 back. That's impressive. Yeah, so we got almost $20,000 back. That's impressive. That's good.
So, that was the, that was the major note from, from the financials. The water, water revenue fund's still holding strong. The sewer fund is gaining, and that's a good sign. Above 100 days.
And I was just looking at the sales tax number. We're, we're down from last year 47,000 year-to-date. But we did, we only budgeted 916,000. So we're at least on track for that, even with the reduced amount, so we should still be okay.
Yeah, it's not bad.
It's just a good thing we budgeted conservatively.
Yeah.
Okay, and anything else you wanna say about those?
No, anybody have any questions?
What was your, now, what was the comment about the sales tax fund again?
The first four months compared last year to this year, this year we have a total of 307,000 year-to-date.
In revenue.
And last, yeah, and then it's 354 for last year.
Okay.
So, but then I just pulled up the budget number, and we budgeted 916, so we're at least on track for the budget number.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, that, that's my report.
And thank you for contacting the people at Inman to find out the stats on what the, what they do and don't get. So that was helpful.
No problem.
Okay, city clerk? All right, moving along to standing committees on street, and I was hoping Lauren Smith was here, but he talked about, you know, the reason we don't ever put speed bumps anywhere is because of snow removal. And he said, Lake Tahoe, they have removable speed bumps. Obviously, it snows in Lake Tahoe. Have you ever looked into those?
Into removable speed bumps? No.
Have you ever heard about them?
Yeah, temporary speed bumps, they're usually like a rubber thingy.
He said that, you know, he said he watched them take them up, and they're only like 10 minutes to take them to the man or take them out or whatever.
Oh, we have a temporary one, we were thinking about him. Yeah, they got it for free.
It's part of a grant project, police department.
Has a temporary speed bump?
Yeah.
That we can, that you can put in a specific place?
Yeah.
Stake down?
How, how come we've never tried that anywhere?
I think they're just waiting for the opportunity.
Well, he, he stopped me, and he said people are still speeding from 8th Street up to the highway. And we put those stop signs at 8th Street, and I said, "It's just two blocks," and he goes, "I know." But, and I wish he would've came, because he was, he isn't wanting us to look into that. Will you find out how much they cost? Because I was also thinking, that might be the cure for 8th Street.
Where on 8th Street? 8th Street to the...
8th Street and Ann, where they...
8th Street, no, nowhere.
What'd I say?
Yeah, you said 8th Street.
Okay, I switched 8th Street, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, different.
So he, so Mr. Smith was talking about right there, really 9th Street and Walnut by the pool. They said the high school kids still boom through there. But also, if we can use these, that 8th and Ann might be the solution, if they're not incredibly...
I don't remember, it was part of a grant that they received.
Will you find out how much they cost and find out how difficult they are to put in?
Yeah, along with that, you might as well get the cost.
Yeah, apparently, they roll out and stake down.
You might as well get the cost.
We hadn't seen it, we discussed it at length.
I've seen it.
You have seen it, okay.
Yeah, it's in a big bag.
It's just in a big bag and you...
It's just sitting there, you decide where to put it?
We'll have to put notices on the side of there.
Yeah, you have to put a speed bump.
I think of where we could use it to experiment with, yeah. And see, you know, it's one of those, we don't know how well it'll hold up and things, but since it was free, I'd be good to try it.
I don't think we have any signage, we needed to make it.
Yeah, that was the other thing.
Oh, you have to put bump.
Yeah, you really need to.
Yeah, otherwise.
It doesn't have to be, was it?
You can go there.
It's a speed bump.
I mean, like, is it about eight inches tall?
No, it's not even.
Six?
Yeah, maybe, not even like five, it doesn't take a lot.
Just slow it down?
Somebody's going, they'll notice it.
Okay, well, if it's temporary though, you put temporary signs out too?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's up and down?
Yep.
Well, anyway, I thought it might solve a couple of problems, when you mentioned it.
Mayor, yes. Why don't we try, and we haven't, having police officers sit there like a little speed trap, or put that sign that we have that says how fast you're going, put that up for a couple of weeks, and then send the officers up there. I did talk to the police chief about that, and he said, "Well, it's hard to determine what is a California stop," which evidently we don't give tickets for, "but I have seen people run signs, there's no California stop, they didn't hit their brakes." So why don't we try that first and get the most egregious offenders by catching them and fining them?
Well, he also said that there's, there's trucks out there with mufflers, which we can, we can...
Catch them and fine them?
We can fine them for that, right? So we need to do that.
There's, there's a lot of things like that though, trucks jake braking, coming down 36.
Yes.
It's hard, they have to be there to catch it, I mean, I mean, I drive around town and I see it, but right.
So, yeah, so hopefully they can sit there for a little bit and find them.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
Find and find.
Right place at the right time.
Yeah, okay.
Just keep one of those used vehicles and stick it on the highway with a dummy.
They slow me down every time I see them.
Or the hairdryer thing. Let's, we haven't tried the hairdryer.
Okay, well, I think it's, if we can find out what, how much they are, if we can install it, and then we have to add the cost of the signs, obviously, but I think it's worth a think considering. When you guys had your committee meeting, did you even talk about that?
That was, that came up right at the end, kind of like, as an aptitude, because it was a lunch hour meeting, so we were trying to hustle out of there, but then come up.
I'd never heard of it, so...
I didn't till that moment, that's the only reason I know about it.
Well, if you talk to the people on that street, they can tell you which car, which color, and what time of day, some of the same people come through there at a high rate of speed. I mean, there's a few of them, and if you catch a couple of them, and it cost them.
Black Nissan pickup.
Yeah, yeah, black Nissan pickup, okay. If people know who's doing this.
Well, okay, you can mention that to chief, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Also on street?
Yeah.
I know we're, we're working on it, but man, Center Street sure is getting torn up in some sections. I called down to City Hall last, maybe last Friday, Thursday.
Did they fix that manhole that you brought on? They did?
Yeah, there, later that day, it was patched with some hot mix or something, or cold mix down in the hole. But I, I was on my way back to work in a hustle, and there was a block of concrete this big in the middle of the street, right out here, because it got kicked up, and I called up here and talked to Sammy, and she got ahold of somebody and they got it fixed. I thought, man, somebody swerves around it and somebody in a regular car hits that chunk of concrete, it's gonna do some damage. But just, I mean, you can tell up by St. Greg's and nearby the Monument Place, boy, is it just, you could go out and just pop up, big chunks of it now.
All these big trucks driving on the street.
And it's usually right at the bottom of, you know, right at certain spots where you can tell that, for whatever reason, it wears out.
Maybe we should just have them check that, if we have to do some patching.
I'd expect them to do some real work on it.
We just got our cold mix in, they just...
Did they finally show up?
Yeah, finally. And it's only a fourth of it too, that's...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Gary said it was open for Wednesday this week, and I talked to him last week.
Do we know where they're setting up the plant this, this summer? Was there some discussion about where they were, where the...
For Blue Rapids?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, they've set it, it's already set up. They've just been doing hot mix the whole summer.
That's the other side of it, is they're for good.
Is it there all summer, they're gonna move it out?
Well, it depends on the workload, which if, if we're getting this, that's a workload right there. Yeah.
One more thing, sorry.
No.
Okay, and one more thing on the street, I talked to a couple of residents out on 12th Road, and a couple of them kinda reached out to me, you know, with questions and concerns, and they wanna make sure that we don't get so involved with 11th and Keystone that we forget about the 12th, 12th Road side, which I told them I know.
And I did talk to one, about one of the homeowners, and they were upset about that we weren't doing dust control, and I told them to come and they didn't come, so...
Well, that, that was, you know, they said that there's not a consensus of opinion about that issue out there, I don't think in the neighborhood. One of the things that, that one of the gentlemen asked me that I, I thought might be a good point is, I know a lot of places where we own half of a road, we annex the other half so that it's all in our jurisdiction or whatever. And my understanding is that between Keystone and Limestone, 12th Road is not in our jurisdiction, like half of it is, is half county or township or whatever.
But they see, I was trying to explain to them, on 12th Road specifically, there's part of that road that is both county, that we know we don't, we don't own either side.
North of Keystone, yeah, Keystone to McKeedings is all county, and then south of there, it's half, and then Keystone is half.
The likelihood that we're gonna improve that.
Well, right, and I...
Unless the county wants to chip in.
Well, I know, I, I think, you know, his argument was it'd kind of be a good faith movement if we started trying to...
Have discussions?
Have discussions about it, and look at maybe annexing that into city and improving at least the section that's along there, even if it didn't connect. It'd be nice if all that came into the city.
It would've been nice to plan a road improvement of that when they annexed that property. It's way out there.
Long-term planning.
They should've had a long-term plan on how to do road improvements.
And, and he said that he actually, the gentleman I talked to wasn't sure that it was a baddy to do the 11th Terrace because of the traffic relief, but, and you know, that's all plotted to route back out to Keystone, that development, Timber Creek Drive or... To Timber Creek? Yeah, Timber Creek's supposed to route up to Keystone, and then his thought was, well, if you do that, then if that was paved, it would give them a paved route out that wasn't 12th Road, if we paved it up to 11th Terrace, and 11th Terrace was...
I asked him if they would start using, I said, "If we pave that far, would you start doing 11th Road?" And they said, "No, we always use 12th Road."
And that's, and then that's what I kind of asked too, and that's why he started on 11th Terrace, because it would be almost equidistant for a lot of those people, and if, I mean, obviously, we're not next to putting that in right away, but in the long term, and that's...
We haven't even figured out what our homeowners are feeling about that, which I guess we need to decide if we wanna have it.
I told them I'd bring it to, you know, council, make sure the conversation continues.
Yeah, I told them to come, and I was kinda surprised it wasn't here, so... Anything else? Yes, oh, there's a double here.
Councilman Gross's favorite subject, so grass in the gutters. Do we have a, do we have an official letter that we send out that we, as a reminder?
Oh, we said chief was here. Chief said that he gives them a warning, right?
To start off, and then they go, and if they drive us back by and they haven't cleaned it up, it gives them a ticket.
Unless, so this is the Methodist church, so I'm less worried about a warning as just a, a nice official reminder that you're not supposed to leave the grass in the gutter.
I've actually talked to the pastor's wife, because she's the one that happened to be outside at the time I passed by, and that it's a block-long kickout into the street, one direction, and a half a block the other direction, they kick out in this far. Now, if you will notice, their parking lot has not one blade of grass on it after it's mowed, but they'll go along and kick it out into the street. And she said, "Please, would you please address that to their, to their board?" Which I did not do.
That's why I'm thinking the letter would be...
I think I came in here and said that to somebody, this was last year.
It's just, it, I don't remember this being the first year they must've, but it's been that way pretty consistently for the last month.
They hire it done, and so it needs to get to their contractor, but they ultimately responsible, because it's their land, and they did stop it for a while. I mean, all you have to do is turn the mower around and kick the grass back in. Toward the grass you're gonna mow.
Go through a blower.
Yeah, or take a blower.
Anyway.
But you're, if, if they're doing it again, which I haven't seen this summer, definitely it needs to be addressed.
It'd just be nice to just send a fish, here's what you, please remember the ordinance is that you can't, and just...
Well, actually, the police will go up and knock on their door.
I know.
They'll make a verbal, they'll walk out of there.
So, in this situation, like if Brad sees it, he can call you, and the police will go, or call here, or call the police department?
With the, me, us, yeah.
It's that way right now.
Wouldn't it need to come through here to get a work order, to get it on record?
To get the letter out?
To get it on record, there's...
Well, the chief, it depends, if you want the chief to go get the warning and push that.
Just a letter might be nice, because then they can hand to the board, as opposed to if you go talk to somebody, as Councilman Gross did, it may not get to the right people, so I just...
Well, then we'd need to have letters printed that the chief...
And maybe that's, maybe that's the right to go, just, I'm not, I'm not less worried about a ticket than I am just a reminder that this is the right thing to do, and...
Well, if it's gonna end up with a ticket, then we need to have proof that we went through the process.
Yeah, right, right. So, anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jayhawk Road, 16th to 8th Street.
Okay, I'm with you.
We're, we're supposed to maintain.
Graded, we're supposed to grade it.
It needs grading. We just graded it a week or so ago.
I have to disagree with that. I thought it a week ago, and the same way it is now. It just got holes on it six inches deep all the way through it.
And we, we were just hauling rock out there. In fact, I had a person come in and talk to me about it, and they said, "We don't do anything," and then she goes back and says, "Oh, I saw you pouring rock into it." So, yeah.
They need to do it again.
Yeah, okay. Jayhawk, 16th.
When did you drive it?
Today.
Today, okay, there you go.
On my way here.
He says it's not good like that.
Yeah, 16th.
Thanks for driving around. Denny's usually does the drive-around, and he's not here tonight, so we appreciate you doing the drive-around.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, Caroline's...
Oh my goodness, we have a lot of street issues, okay.
How we doing on that?
Tony's been working on the plans, and he's, he apologized to me today, because he's been talking to Mr. Fincham about it, and he wanted to have one more meeting with them before he finalized the plans, just so he could be happy with it, which, I mean, that's fine. But that's what they're waiting on.
We're dragging this out, considering it's gonna be done last year.
Yeah.
Well, this is AHSB, right?
Yeah.
They're in town.
I understand that, but this is a last-year project too that was gonna got, get done.
Yeah, and we're waiting on the plans, and, and like I said, Tony, Tony Dever apologized to me today about it.
I'd like to see some plans for next meeting.
Next week, next meeting. You can tell them that Kevin's...
Kevin wants plans there, if we get this going.
All right, let's move along to water wastewater. Just the break, is it repaired? I was out of town.
Repaired, yes.
Yeah.
And KDHE, Helen came, our inspector, came through and looked at everything and took notes and where we bypassed and all that stuff. And as far as I know, it's, it's okay.
And did we hire Larson to do that as well?
Yeah, on the second, we did the first big one on our own, and then we hired Larson to do the second one, because it was in the side of a hill, and they have better equipment to work on it, so that's, and they did it, they did it real quick.
Okay, so that's repaired. So we're gonna see another Larson, just so you know, Vic, in the appropriations ordinance for the next one. Okay, any other water wastewater? Parks and Rec. Cap, you were gonna do something with Lakeview.
Haven't got anything back from them yet.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Anybody got parks?
Um, yes, I see here before us that we have gotten a compliment on the city park. Does somebody wanna read that, or shall I read it?
You can.
Okay, down at City Park, there is a place near the bath, on the bathroom's wall outside, that people can let us know how they think about our park and Marysville in general. And this gentleman passing through said, "Fantastic surprise to find Marysville, great park site, best city park I've ever stayed in." So that's real nice, and a credit to the gentlemen that take care of the park, and to the people that use the park, that pick the trash up around after they've used the park.
Yeah.
And then also, I'd like, maybe, Austin, and I had talked about this earlier, it's about the pool, and we have a, we have a printout here in front of all of us, that's about the hours spent working for our two pool managers. They've been putting in hours, but also maybe to talk about the advertising for the water safety instructor certification. Austin, you wanna talk about that? It's open to everybody.
Oh, yeah, water, WSI, Claire and Chloe have organized for a certified Red Cross instructor to certify people in water safety instruction. It is, we are opening it up to everybody. It's September, not September, May 19th, 20th, and 21st, but it is required that you do seven hours online training before that, so if you want to participate in this, let us know immediately. It's $235 a person, plus the travel expenses of the instructor, and the more people we get into it, the less the traveling expenses cost each person. So that, yeah, it's open up to anybody who wants to be WSI certified.
Do they have a limit?
Uh, I haven't heard of a limit. We're trying to get at least six people involved, and we've gotten close to that interested.
Anything else?
Well, the certification is necessary if you're going to manage a pool. The certification is important if you wanna be a lifeguard, it looks good on a resume, and it also puts you in line to be a pool manager. It's a requirement. It's excellent to have. I think it also, I think you can also teach lifeguards with water, with a Red Cross certification.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you can teach lifeguards just with a WSI.
With a, with a Red Cross certification.
Uh, but, yeah, but the WSI is really, what we're really using it for is, so we can have swim lessons. And you, we have to have somebody certified in WSI for swim lessons, and those are important to our citizens, so...
So the six people that are interested are some of them other than our lifeguard?
Oh, yeah.
The lifeguards other than Chloe and Claire?
It's just Chloe and Claire, plus surrounding people. We're not gonna certify any of the other lifeguards.
Yeah, we're talking pools in other towns.
Like, we, we've been talking to some pools that are hiring new staff to manage their pools, and, and then people who just wanna get certified in it. We only have two that are gonna participate from Marysville. We're getting from surrounding towns also involved into it.
Are we hoping to have Claire and Chloe run it again next year?
Yes.
Okay, just wondering, if that's our plan.
Yes.
All right, anything else? All right, cemetery and airport, police and fire. I, um, just, we don't, we don't have anything on the exercise program?
Not that I...
That was supposed to be reviewed in March, in March, the police exercise program?
Yes.
But you, you know, the other thing is, I would really like to have some kind of program that involves all our city employees. And my son had something called Impulse that they track, it's kinda like a Fitbit, but, but, and then they have certain awards that they get based on certain records they've maintained, like he has so many steps, and if he hits it every day for, then he gets a financial reward. And I'm thinking, a small one, like five, 10, or 15 bucks. But the concept is to have people stay in shape, and that everybody gets to participate... everybody gets to participate, not just the police department.
Self-maintained records?
No, because it's in your pocket and it...
It uploads, yeah.
In Bluetooth or Wi-Fi or whatever.
Yeah.
It's centrally kept.
Yeah, so you, you, he puts it in his pocket and he just walks around with it?
It has to be, I think, kinda carefully administered HIPAA-wise, but other than that, I know a lot of places have gone and doing it.
I think it's a great idea to encourage all our employees. I know some of our employees work really hard and they master the steps in like the first half of their day. But I'm thinking it's a good way, I think, of my, one of my problems with the police department is that only they get this benefit where this is an option to have a benefit everybody on staff. So, wait, how do you guys feel about it?
Oh, well, one of my problems is we're still paying them to exercise on time while they're on duty. That's still a problem.
Well, this little Impulse thing will tell you how many steps they take too, but anyway, it's probably private information, like you said, HIPAA, but you have, but, but still, will you look into it and just see how expensive it is? It was called Impulse? Have, do you, are you familiar with it?
There's probably competing companies doing it by now, so I might be checking to see what a couple of different options are.
So, everybody will have to buy the Fitbit thing?
Well, no, it, it's actually, his just goes in his pocket because you might wanna wear a watch when you're working.
But we'd have to pay for everybody to have one of those? Aren't they expensive?
It'd be initial investment, but I just think it's a way so that everyone has an option to reward.
And depending on the technology, some of them aren't that expensive.
They come in different styles. You can get one that goes in your pocket, one that flips on your belt, one that goes on your wrist.
So, I can put it in the pocket of one of the neighbor kids and let him run around all day and then give it back to me?
You can.
Excellent. And I get paid money for that? Excellent.
Vicki?
Yes?
Take your way from the process. The process is to vote all the city crew.
I understand that part.
Staff to have an ability to make some kind of reward system by being healthy. That was my point. Okay. Um, oh, and James Kern is getting recognized. Do you wanna mention that? Chief's not here tonight.
Uh, oh, yeah, of course. Um, James Kern is getting recognized this Wednesday at the Chief of Police, uh, Convention in Overland Park for his service. I believe there was a standoff in, over the winter. Um, if I, if I remember, I don't have my notes about it, but, uh, for his, for his service, he's, he's getting a really prestigious award from the, from the Chief of Police Organization. So, uh, I am, uh, I will be in attendance. The mayor will be in attendance to help support him.
To clap for him?
Yes.
What will that be? Overland Park, on Wednesday night?
Wednesday night.
And that's something we put in the newsletter right the monthly.
We definitely will.
Yeah, good, good.
But anyway, just, you know, congratulations to James now. All right, admin and finance?
I don't know if this is where this goes, but I'm looking at the quarterly port, report for the Marysville Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Center, January 1st through March 31st. And as I'm looking down at the hours, 232 hours are represented. Um, and under expenses, it shows these 232 hours to be a total of $3,250. Um, I see postage and mailing, $39, supplies and copies, 109. But I, I would like to see some amplification on what these personal efforts are. I don't know what that means.
Well, I think that...
How's the time spent?
The convention and tourism discussed that. Have, did I miss a meeting or are they getting ready to discuss it?
I don't think they ever, I don't think they ever.
We just got this, right?
Mm-hmm, we just, I was laying here when we got here.
Yeah.
Today?
Yeah.
We just got it tonight?
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, um, I don't think they've actually held a meeting that they wanna...
To discuss that?
Yeah.
Yeah, convention and tourism is kinda questioning some of the hours because saying those are really MCDC versus convention and tourism, since Michelle's doing some of...
But I don't think we have it nailed down yet.
So, they'll probably come and present something.
Okay, and when I have a chance to look more into that, I think I wanna discuss this more. But they're gonna have a meeting, maybe I should go to that meeting.
Well, I, convention and tourism, I don't even, when is there a meeting?
The, the next, the next one is Thursday, next Thursday. Yeah.
Not this coming Thursday, but the...
It's this Thursday, this Thursday. Cause if it's the second Thursday, yeah, second Thursday.
Second Thursday.
On the 11th, where at what time?
Do you know, y'all?
11:30. Usually, the, the regular meeting for convention and tourism is 11:30 on the second Thursday.
And it's gonna be at her office always?
Yeah, they're gonna try to have it at...
Okay.
At the convention and tourism office?
Yeah.
Main Street.
Main Street slash convention and tourism office.
Down here on Street, Old PD.
Yep.
Old PD, thank you. It's not the same.
If it's not, that way you let her know if it's not on their line. Okay.
Two, I'm sorry, two, two things on that. Um, and I, again, this related to the auditor. Um, one, it was brought up, did the city treasurer not respond to requests from the auditor?
Yes, uh, I believe that is the case. I don't know, I don't know exactly the reason why, but, uh, there are some times that she wouldn't get a response.
Is that a concern?
So, have you talked to him about it?
I have.
Maybe we should find out what his response is.
Um, and on the same thing, during one of the league sessions, and I don't remember exactly which one, this recommendation by the league was that we change auditors on a...
Every once in a while.
Every once in a while.
Is this their fifth year?
Check.
Is this their fifth year?
Yeah, this, 2017's the last audit for the contract that we're currently in.
Yeah, it was up there.
We'll be looking out for bids.
So, we'll, okay. Yeah, they'll, they'll audit this year and then we'll go out to bids.
All right, thank you.
And the only other thing I had, um, you know, we talked about the monarchs last year, we, last meeting, Jim Swin. And, uh, if it's, if it's really gonna draw people to Marysville, don't you think we should put it down by the ferry park? Cause we don't ever get people to go down to the ferry park. And if we could find an area on that road, like on your way to the ferry park?
Well, I wondered about that too. That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because our ferry park is so cool, but nobody goes there.
It's hard to get to.
Yeah. So, we're waiting to get some monarchs flying in there.
Just another opportunity to draw people down there.
So, see, yeah, so see if there's a ponding area down there.
Well, you've already got signage. So, if you add the signage and you've got another thing that says...
Yeah, under the bridge as long as they don't block the traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be Ford Bridge.
Yeah.
On the west side?
On the south.
South.
Yeah, southwest, southwest. Well, there's, yeah, there's that where the sewer plant must be in that.
Southeast, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that'd be great.
It's on the way there.
Okay, that's all I had. Anybody else for admin and finance? Okay, on page 33 are the appointments for the fire department?
I'll make a motion for the mayor's annual appointments. Fire Chief David Richardson, Deputy Fire Chief Rich Rockwell, and Assistant Fire Chief Dennis Randall.
Second.
Dennis Rockwell?
Just, Dennis.
Did you say Dennis Rockwell?
Yeah.
Is that what you said? Okay. Did you say second?
Yes.
Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five votes. And there's two wage requests. First one is for street and the second one is for parks.
Do you wanna take them separately or together?
Separately.
Okay.
Okay, Vic, we'll take them separately.
Whatever you say, whatever you say. Uh, move to approve the seasonal street position for Jesse Weeks and at 11:56 an hour, beginning effective May, Thursday needed.
Second. Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five votes. And?
Move to approve the seasonal cemetery parks position for Dennis Haybig at 11:56 an hour, uh, beginning April 1st.
We're a little late in that one.
Yeah, I know.
So, why we're so late? Did he start April 1st?
Probably.
Yeah, the...
A little backdated.
Backdated, he was somewhere in April.
Okay, okay. Second. Any discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five votes. All right, we do not have a city attorney. I do not know of any reason for executive session. Anybody? So, um, I know the Mother's Day Market is this weekend. They sent out a possibility to work. You don't have an email, but I hope you guys all sign up to work if you're in town at the barbecue. What do you mean? Are you shaking your head? No, Kev?
I will not be here. I'll be in Missouri this weekend.
You won't be here?
North Point.
North Point?
I did do Saturday and I can't do, I was gonna do Sunday but changed plans by noon Saturday.
And Vic?
I always do.
Okay, well, you need to sign up.
Well, I didn't get anything.
Okay.
Who do I go to sign up?
Uh...
You get an email and then...
No.
You...
Oh, kidding me.
Michelle Weitzel will have the schedule, don't you think?
It's, well, it's online on Google. It's a doc, so I'm guessing you can say Michelle or...
Yeah, go, go talk to Michelle.
I'm just thinking if she stops talking to Michelle, she can see where, where she's needed.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, would someone like to go, um, Candy, why with me tomorrow?
Hmm.
Okay.
What time?
9:35.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Good boy.
And I was out of town. Did anybody participate in that Pony Up Marysville?
I did, well...
Was it good?
It was very good.
Yes, I was gonna comment on that.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Well, you want, I'll let you guys do it then. And I was gonna ask you about the bike ride, so I'll, I'll go ahead and defer to Bill.
What happened?
Okay, Brad?
Couple things. Um, so congratulations to Maryville Community Foundation, $130,000 raised from 400 donors.
Yeah, buddy.
For 15 organizations. Their goal was, um, 60.
Their goal was 60?
The goal was 60, but that was because they didn't have any, they really had no idea what they were gonna do. The 130 did not include the 30,000 from, that were matching funds from, um, several areas, Citizens Bank and a couple of other...
So, that's not the matching number?
No, that is just, that was just donors.
Wow, they should've been jumping up and down.
Everybody had a really good, really good days.
30,000?
130,000, just short of that. So, um, very successful day and, um, that was just, that was just that one day. So, and then they, you can give through their new website, you can give throughout the year, um, to all those organizations. And I'm sure they'll have more organizations that sign up than for next year. So, that'll be the annual event. So, they were very happy. You know, Sarah's, Sarah's part of that board, so, but yeah, they're...
Awesome.
A great day.
Good job.
Um, two other things regarding convention and tourism. Do we have, do we know when the new website is supposed to be up? It's still the old one? And I thought the whole goal was we were gonna have a new website?
Um, I remember her sharing about that at convention today and that that was her number one priority for all these events.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it, yes.
Yeah. It's kinda overran between, I think, she's done a lot of work with the museums. She said that it's taken much more time than she initially planned. But all good things, you know, like that museum day that had, and now she's obviously getting a hold on the Mother's Day Market and, uh, but it's still a high priority to do. So, we can mention to her that someone mentioned it.
The other thing was, did anybody in convention tourism go to the Sampler Fest? Because I know...
Well, the MCDC was supposed to go.
Well, they were, but they're not. I mean, I guess if, if that's a, it just feels like if we're gonna push Marysville, that was not...
Well, I think they decided that it was down in Winfield. Isn't that what it was?
Yeah.
It was way far away.
We sent, we sent a ton of materials with Kev. It's on Highway 77.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's the last year.
I went last year.
And they decided since it was so far away, but they did send materials.
Yes, we were bringing the materials up, yes.
That's all I got.
Yep.
I'm touching on that. I, you know, this was the last year for the Kansas Sampler Festival. They're changing format. They're going to a road trip format next year and from then on.
Interesting.
Where they're gonna do like regional things and get people, the idea being that instead of all the little towns having to go to one location advertised, they draw people through and they'll have like, just as example, maybe it'd be Westmoreland and , um, Oneega and Seneca and Marysville would all kinda, and they'd try to route people through all these.
Regional thing?
Yeah, over a couple of days. So, people would come and stay on the hotels and all these, I mean, the restaurants and go and visit all these small towns.
That's a great idea.
I think it's, I mean, next year will be, I'm sure they'll be finding their way a little. But realistically, since Marysville didn't have enough hotel rooms to host the Sampler Festival, this could be a good thing for, you know, for us in this area.
To share the space.
To get a little bit more of that outside dollars flooding in. Um, and speaking of dollars, you know, one thing Brad didn't mention on the, uh, Pony at Marysville is we beat the pants off of Sabatha. Not that that was like the end of the world or anything, but they had a very successful, uh...
Sabatha happened the same day?
No, they, theirs last year, I think. It's the first. Do they have two now?
I'm not sure, but they, they did well.
I know they had 100,000 and the, the, uh, Manhattan Area Community Foundation was very like, that was amazed them that they got 100. So, that was kind of, you know, my hope. And I think a lot of people saw that we could push beyond that. And so, we did significantly. Um, and I think that, that sets a really good example. And the, the number of donations was as, to me, as impressive as anything. There's a lot of small donations and a lot of, you know, individual contributors. And I think it was really well-run. I knew people who came in from outside the county to, but who, you know, are active and involved with businesses or family in Marysville and went and visited the Hellring Center. And they said it was very well-run. They were made to feel very welcome. It was just, I mean, for the first time around, I don't know that it could be done. Could've been done better, so.
It's a good group.
Yeah, it's really good.
So, yeah.
Um, and the Blue River Rail Trail, um, had the first annual, I don't know if they'll keep doing it, hopefully. Maybe they said in the fall, uh, ride to Lincoln from the trail head up here on Saturday. It had been postponed since the weather, the week before was not ideal. Um, been really good weather Saturday, had, um, 30 some. I don't, I don't have the, uh, numbers on, you know, how many actually were there, but a lot of locals, but also some riders from Lincoln and Manhattan. Some people really came in from farther away. Started here and to ride up north. And, you know, it was a really good opportunity. It's actually four trails or, I don't know, three trails because it's Blue River Rail Trail in Kansas, Chief Standing Bear Trail from the state line to Beatrice, and then Beatrice North is the Homestead Trail. And there's, you know, it changes a little bit here and there. That section much farther north up by Pickrell and Cortland is, I don't know, like a decade old now. It's been there a while. Um, but it was, you know, kind of a neat opportunity to get people out there and see it. And it also, you know, it's good advertising when people see you riding the trail because it, you know, kind of brings awareness.
Was it nice, the trail?
It was. And it was very well-maintained. Um, you know, it was really just kind of a neat opportunity to get, get a little good PR for Marysville. And I know, part of tying back to the, um, Pony at Marysville, I think that's, they're still trying to negotiate with U.P. on getting it down into town. But I think once they do that, that'll improve as well. And so, these things kind of all tie together. But it, it definitely, people were very positive about it from out of town, so. So, these things kind of all tie together, but it, it definitely, people were very positive about it from out of town, so...
I, I forgot about the Pony Up, I was in Florida in Twin World and, um, not Disney World, but Twin World.
Is that F? (inaudible)
And so I looked, I, I, I saw on the Facebook where Pepsi said that they got over $10,000 and they were all excited, so... Cool.
Yeah, that's all good.
Vic?
Um, I did, I did participate in Pony Up Marysville and I'm just me, not a corporation or a business, so all of it was out of my pocket and I can't write any of it off 'cause I don't itemize. Okay, um, question, Brad, $130,000 brought in? Didn't, didn't Pony Up people say the max that they would match? 'Cause they were gonna match 50% of donations, but wasn't...
Up to 2,000.
Up to 2,000?
Up to 2,000.
Maximum was 30,000, right?
They hit the 30,000 at 11:45 and so you had to... It went to the first, it was a first come, first served, up to 2,000 before the 30,000 was gone. And it was 11:45, which they, they thought noon, so they were 15 minutes early.
So, it was like 160,000.
Yes, in total donations, yes.
But there was 100,000 that they, they didn't match, 'cause I'm sure this was way more successful than they ever imagined, more than I was and I'm disappointed nobody else wore their cowboy hats and their kerchiefs and their boots because we were supposed to go west where, but I was the only doofus that went dressed like they were supposed to.
You're the only dude?
I was the doo-dit with the hat, yeah.
The cowgirl, well, I'm very proud of you, Vic.
Yes, and I got to talk to the people from Sabatha that brought this idea to Marysville. I thanked them, I called them the mothership because that's who we go to.